Okay, good evening, everyone. Nice to have you all here. This is Monday, September 21st. It is 7:01 PM. This is a meeting of the Sustainable Development Committee of the Bloomington Common Council. So, welcome and thank you for being here. We essentially have one item on our agenda this evening, and it is a chance to receive an update on a grant proposal that is under construction right now. So, Mr. Lucas, do we need a roll call or no? We're a committee, right?
No, there's no need for a roll call vote.
Okay.
Or just a... A roll for the attendance.
Got it. Thank you. So, with that, why don't I turn it over to Mr. Crowley, and why don't you get us started?
Hi, everyone. Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. Forgive me, I'm using my work computer, and it has proven less than adept at strong audio. So, I will, if you can't hear me at any point, just put your hand up, and I'll try to repeat myself. So, what we're going to do tonight, thank you for hosting us, Jen Pearl with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and I. We're going to just take you through really two broad agenda items. One, a brief description of the grant that we are working collaboratively together to complete this week and issue. I will take you through some of the highlights of the grant itself. And then Jen will take you through how we are addressing the grant and the concept that we're proposing. We're doing it in part to keep you informed as to what we're doing. We also would like to discuss with you the possibility, perhaps, of having some sort of documented support from this committee to insert into the grant itself. We think that might be helpful. And we can maybe talk about that as part of the Q and A process after our brief presentations. So, if it's okay with you, I thought I would share my screen, and I have a very brief presentation I'll take you through quickly. And again, my part will be to just high level about what this grant is. And then Jen will take you through what we're proposing to submit for the grant. So, let me share my screen if I may. Can everybody see this? Okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, spoiler alert, this is a design of a building that we're proposing, but I'll let Jen get into the details. I'll throw the picture up. It's looking kind of cool, though. Okay, so let me start. Just high level, the Economic Development Administration, or EDA, is an agency within the US Department of Commerce that supports programs to help make it easier for businesses to start and grow in the United States. So, this is kind of its broad mandate. It works hand in hand with local economic development partners to advance locally developed projects. So, they will support financially projects that are developed locally. And the objective of that investment is to try to drive a region's long-term sustainable economic development strategy. What the EDA announced back in the late spring, as COVID was settling in, was that the CARES Act provided about $1.5 billion to the EDA in a program called the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, specifically to help to really fund these grants to help communities like ours address the COVID economic impact. So, the CARES Act provided $1.5 million. And again, it was to help communities prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. The EDAs determined that an economic injury from the pandemic constitutes what it called a special need. And therefore, they automatically made eligibility possible nationwide for these funds. And that the applicants did not need to demonstrate additional economic distress to be eligible. And broadly, the CARES Act splits up the money across a variety of different EDA regions. We are sitting in the region that's based out of Chicago, if I'm not mistaken. So, who's eligible? Our state and local governments? Nonprofit organizations working in cooperation with local government? Institutions of higher education? And Native American tribal governments? And the reason all of that's important is mostly because it's a very, very competitive process. And so, you know, to some extent, this is a bit of a hail mary. We think we have a good concept, as Jen will take you through. But this is going to be applied for this somewhat limited money will be applied for by a variety of different types of institutions nationwide. So, some, you know, general examples of EDA projects are listed here. You know, everything from capitalizing of revolving loans, access to small capital for small businesses, these are sort of typically the kinds of things that they do. What we're most interested in, and what Jen will take you through, and what we're pursuing, is the bottom bullet, which is construction of critical infrastructure and facilities that will support economic recovery and job creation. We'll get into the details of that. So, the way that the grant works is that the EDA via the CARES Act funding will match 80% of the total cost of a project. So, you have the grant, which is matching 80%, the 20% local match, together, total the total project costs. We'll take you through some of those numbers for our situation. So, it's a very, very appealing grant. Of course, it makes it very, very competitive. Typically, the EDA match scenarios tend to be about 50/50. So, this skews much more heavily toward having them fund significant portion of a project. So, there are various requirements in the application. And one of those, and a very significant one, is what's called a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, SEDs, or an equivalent document. That is a document that we have put together, we being BEDC and the city and a number of different stakeholders. We can take you through some of those details if you'd like. But basically, that document, if you look to the right of your screen, you'll see that document has a traditional flow, which includes, among other things, doing a SWOT analysis for your area of concentration. And then having strategic direction and action plan stemming from that SWOT analysis with an evaluation framework and measurement approach for how those strategies and actions might be implemented, and whether or not they're being implemented successfully. So, each project must be consistent with the region's current approved SEDs or EDA-accepted equivalent strategy. And as I noted, the BEDC and the City of Bloomington have collaborated on an initial SEDs equivalent document for the application. But that document will be updated and will, in fact, continue to be updated well into the future. It's really meant to look out five and 10 years and try to lay the groundwork for what kind of economic development strategies need to be implemented to meet the goals of the community. I should note that the SEDs equivalent document that's been put together somewhat hurriedly for this plan has leveraged many, many plans that have already preceded it. The Patel Study, a variety of different local and regional plans, a housing study. We referenced a variety of plans to build it. So, it's not coming out of the blue. It's well researched, and it reflects, in our opinion, the foundation of what we want to build here in Bloomington. But there's more work to be done on it in the months and years ahead. So, you know, basically, what we are trying to align with is, you know, what the grants are looking for. And, you know, we need to, among other things, align with the priority that the EDA has for recovery and resilience. We need to very clearly explain how the project will prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus, or respond to the economic injury as a result of coronavirus. And then there are other EDA priorities that, in addition to the top two, which are really critical in the application, are looked at really in the competitiveness of a particular project or proposal. So, those are critical infrastructure, workforce development, manufacturing, exports and FDI, and opportunity zones. And from our perspective, we really think, you know, first of all, the workforce development component of ours is very strong. It's a somewhat unique project, as we understand it from our contact at EDA. So, we hope that will increase the competitiveness of the proposal. It also happens to sit where we're proposing to locate the project inside an opportunity zone. And there's very strong interest by the EDA when you have that kind of overlap. So, we think that in those two areas in particular, our proposal may be pretty competitive. Having said that, and really to manage expectations, this is a very, very competitive process. And, you know, a little bit of a hail mary, but we think that, you know, absolutely worth doing, particularly given the percentage of funding that would come from the federal government. So, I'll stop there, turn it over to Jen, and then we can perhaps come back, if you'd like, and answer any questions from the two projects. I think you'll get a better understanding of what I'm talking about as Jen goes through the specifics of our proposal. So, I'll stop sharing.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I'll share my screen as well. It's good to see everyone. I think we're all acquainted. And I'd also like to thank the City of Bloomington. They've been remarkable partners to work with. And this is kind of an ongoing partnership we've had over time. We were able to partner on the launch of the mill. And we just appreciated everyone's support. I should also say, and Sue, this may speak to earlier this year. The process that we went through for ESNR and building the policy document for responding to the early pandemic, that process looks simple compared to what we're doing right now for EDA. And so, just hats off to all of our partners at the city, as well as the many others that have been working on this. Because EDA has a competitive process, and they want to make sure things are well thought through. It is pretty rigorous. So, I am going to share my screen to talk about the concept that we are proposing. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of what we're proposing here is something called the Trades District Technology Center. And what the vision is, is to grow future tech company growth and employment in the City of Bloomington across Monroe County, as well as extending to the region. And the way it will work is it will provide both programming and services for local tech companies to help grow the region's economic competitiveness through future-focused diverse employment, as well as providing space where our existing tech companies can co-locate and essentially create synergy with one another. The target for this project is technology companies that are beyond the startup phase with services and space for growing immature firms. And the idea here is that we're picking up where the mill leaves off and creating synergy between the investment and the efforts that are happening with the mill and carrying it forward here. It's located in the Trades District, obviously, and it would be cat a corner from the mill. And the managing entity is a nonprofit that we've established to operate this facility, called the Trades District Technology Center, Inc. The connection that Alex made with COVID recovery, obviously, we have to express this in the grant, is you can see prior to the pandemic, this is a snapshot of our population, labor force, employment in Monroe County. And we had a relatively low unemployment rate prior to the pandemic. It was around, for the metropolitan area, it was about 3.6%. It skyrocketed up to 10.3% in April, and then was down around 7.8% in July. And if you look at continued unemployment claims, and what this means, a continued claim is when someone has an initial filing, and then they re-up it in additional weeks. So, that means that their unemployment is continuing. If you look right before lockdowns in early March, we had 209 for Monroe County. And then it skyrocketed to 3,200 in early May and settled into about 1,600 or so by mid-September. So, obviously, we've been very affected here. And the industries that are most affected have included tourism through the university shutting down, as well as some of health and manufacturing in our area. The takeaway that we have from this is that diversification of the local economy is key. And the more that we can make sure we have a diverse employment base, where there's options, you know, across industries for many people, the better stabilize that you can keep over time, is the theory. And our economy has gone through pivots before. So, if you think back to Shower Brothers Furniture Company, then we went to manufacturing later. And then as DE and others left, you pivoted again towards life sciences. This is sort of the next step in that iteration, as we try to diversify options for our community. Now, when we say, why do we want to build a technology center in the Trades District? This actually ties to a great deal of research and previous investment that's happened in the community. So, Alex mentioned the Patel Study, which was conducted as under contract by the Regional Opportunity Initiative in 2014. And it identified technology as a key cluster for economic opportunity across the region. And we think that this cluster is best positioned to grow from this project because tech is still growing. Technology also applies across almost all other sectors and can strengthen your existing industries in the region. So, for example, if you're applying technology to life sciences or other industries, it requires less infrastructure and resources. It also ties to two key public resources of technology development. One is Indiana University, and the other is Crane. And IU has a partnership with Crane. And it's much more cost-effective for tech companies to locate in Bloomington compared to the east or the west coast. What this also looks to do is build on the momentum that we already have in our community. The Certified Technology Park, where the Trades District sits, was first certified in 2005. In 2013, we had the Trades District Master Plan, where there was growing recognition of the burgeoning tech center. As of 2017, the city and with partnership from the BEDC launched the mill. More recently, we've had investments in the Kiln property, and this would further essentially provide investment in that region while diversifying the economy. And then overall, if we talk about the types of services, and I'm going to scroll back up to the overview here, the types of services that will be provided within this bucket, broadly speaking, tied to providing connections between our local tech companies, as well as regional assets. We had to conduct a feasibility study for this project, and we contracted with the IU Public Policy Institute for that. That's a requirement of the grant. And something they had found through data analysis, as well as stakeholder interviews, is that we're a community that's rich in resources to support the growth of these jobs and these industries, but there's a bit of fragmentation. And so, the finding from the feasibility studies, not only is this feasible, but this is very much needed to take things to the next level in our community to promote that growth moving forward. So, in terms of services that'll be provided, the broad buckets include connections with resources in the area, as well as support for talent attraction and growth. Many times, tech talent don't realize that there are opportunities for them beyond maybe the university or the larger institutions. And we would also be working with workforce development programs to ensure the local talent is skills-ready for these industries. Another bucket of support would be advisory services. Many times, companies are great at their individual technologies, but they may need some support when it comes to knowing how to run HR or do marketing or other things like that. So, there would be support provided through the center for that. Another bucket is funding connections with local funding, whether it's angel investing or other funds that are available. And support for those companies that may wish to go after grants, such as SBIR and STTR. And then the final section of, or bucket of support, I guess you would say, would be federal information and connections. So, tech companies may have opportunities to go after federal procurement opportunities. And even if they wish to sell internationally, the US federal government provides support for that. So, this would really bring resources together under one roof, within one place. And we have a number of partners that have already signed on, both through the board for this nonprofit entity, as well as in-kind support for the center. So, at that, I'm going to stop sharing and open up if anyone has any questions.
Pearl, thank you, Mr. Crowley. I appreciate it. I want to ask one question, just to kind of, that I think will help calibrate. If I'm understanding correctly, you're sharing this with us as kind of a prelude to an invitation to express our overall support, but there's no request of council for funding, correct?
That's right. So, yeah, I should speak to that a little bit. So, the funding match, which is that 20% match for the building construction project, is an RDC TIF-funded line. So, that funding will be taken care of that way. And then, you know, the building is supposed to be self-sufficient within handful of years that the, I think it's three years that the EDA require. The city would come to council as part of the regular appropriations process, should there be operating support for the building. But at this time, what we're looking for for council is, and the building, you know, won't open until 2023. But what we're looking for from you, and then we will also, just so you know, be doing a brief overview to the council meeting on the 23rd. But given the timing of the application, we're actually hoping to submit the application in advance of our ability to do a presentation to the full council. So, what we were asking for from this committee, to the extent that you would feel comfortable doing it, would be either a letter of support or some other indication that you, you know, support broadly the objective of the project. And then we would include that as part of a number of letters of support we've gotten from various groups and private sector people and university and others that sort of round out the sort of public support message that we have in the grant and in the feasibility study.
Great. Thank you. That's actually kind of helpful in calibrating. So, with that, let's go to council member questions. Council member Volan.
Yes, what's the actual amount of money that you're seeking?
So, the grant right now is going to be somewhere in the $9.1 million, meaning that roughly 7. something would be coming from the, would be coming from the federal government if granted. And just shy of $2 million would be funded by TIF.
What will you do if the grant doesn't come through?
The grant doesn't come through? There, well, there are a couple of paths forward. First of all, you know, one of the advantages of spending the energy, which can be a little depressing if you don't get a grant. But in the case where you spend a lot of energy towards a grant and are not awarded the grant, what you hope to get out of the process is better alignment, better clarity on what the need is. And so, actually, the effort that's already been made, just submitting for the grant, has been helpful in its own, right? It's aligned various parties. It's this feasibility study that was commissioned and actually funded by IU, to their credit. You know, all of that is really, really helpful for us, regardless of the outcome. If we don't...
I guess, right. Well, I guess maybe what I mean is, is this building going to get built no matter what? Or is this a building that you're asking to build because it's an opportunity? Like, in other words, is the land, could the land still be, say, bought by a private entity or built on by a third party? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, so there are two, actually, two paths forward. One is that, you know, the possibility of the private sector seeing the value of this and building it, and then operating it as a sort of, you know, traditional building. It's a somewhat inefficient building, so it's not really appealing as a kind of traditional office building by design. But frankly, I've already gotten inquiries about this. So, there is, you know, there's always a possibility of private sector involvement. You know, it would be a bit of a stretch, but I think that's a possibility. The other one is that, you know, what we've uncovered in terms of need might be able to be delivered in another way. And we haven't really spent a lot of time on that, because obviously, we're concentrated on this particular proposal. But should we not be awarded this, certainly, one of the other paths forward would be to try to determine if there's an option that could, you know, deliver some parts of this that are needed, while not delivering the entirety of the project as conceived.
In other words, the Trades District Tech Corporation will get formed even if the building doesn't get built?
Yes, that nonprofits have actually already been formed. It's in its final stages of being formed. So, that entity will exist. It's right now, you know, would be focused on the building if the building were built. But if it weren't, that could be, that could be a vehicle for carrying forward some of the goals and some of the strategies that, you know, to the extent we could without that building.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And council member Flaherty, did I see you?
Sure. I have questions. So, yeah. Thank you both for the presentation. Did I understand right? You're hoping, Alex, to have a letter of, potentially a letter of support from the committee? Is that like in the next day or two? I think you said in advance of council meeting on the 23rd, if I wasn't mistaken.
Yes. So, breakneck speed here in advance. This has been sort of the modus operandi for this thing. But yeah, if possible, and it may not be possible, if possible, that would be the timeframe.
Yeah, just, and I have yet to go through the materials that were sent since along this afternoon, but I will. Breakneck speed, to the extent I can. What, I think you mentioned that the idea would be for the operation of the facility to become self-sustaining within three years. Can you, I was wondering about long-term kind of commitment. So, if we get the grant and the city, you know, opts in at the 1.9 million match that we would have, what additional supports are expected from the city over time? I'm guessing mostly operational, but I'm sure there's some uncertainty here. But if you could talk a little bit more about that, that'd be great.
Yeah, there are different layers of that. So, one is because it's an EDA grant, and a grant, an EDA grant has a fairly long tail of reporting. There's a basic grant management responsibility that the city is proposing to take on as part of this proposals to really report out and manage against the grant, the duration of the grant period. So, that's one. There is, there's going to be personnel involvement in it, not only during the early stages, the construction and the early stages of the building operations. It'll be more in-kind than hard costs in that particular case that will, that will be required from the city, and really from a variety of different economic development partners to help stabilize the building and get it going, you know, hiring executive directors. That'll be done by the board, but there's going to be a lot of, kind of the mechanics of getting a place like this going forward, much like there was for the mill. A lot of effort was put in by staff before the mill ever opened, then into the, and in fact, I'm still working on some stuff, into the early operations of the mill to be able to help that get off the ground. So, there's a certain amount of in-kind, you know, support that the city would put forward for that. And then, and then should there be a gap between the revenues that are coming in from the building? Because it will be leased space, and there will be revenues. And there's also a possibility, although we haven't documented that in the grant, because the EDA doesn't allow it. There is, you may see from, and I can go through some of the drawings, but, you know, there's atrium space that creates event revenue possibilities. There's possibility of things like contributed income, so sponsorships and that sort of thing that can help to bolster the operating cost. But if there's a gap, then the city would come back to you as part of the budget appropriations process and, you know, and present the, you know, the requests then. So, there could be a hard cost, there could be in-kind, and then there's certainly, you know, just the management of the grant through its period.
Okay, if I could follow up a little bit on that thread still, if that's all right with you. Cheers, Kimberly. Thank you. That's helpful. And of course, you know, an 80/20 match is... And, and I, of course, you know, an 80/20 match is, is an appealing prospect. And I'd like to, yeah, read a little bit more about the, you know, the, the use case or the, or the feasibility study. And kind of like, once the building's built, do we have a, a sense of scale still? Like, let's say there, there are revenue gaps, you know, and it's not going quite as well as we'd like. What, like, what type of money are we talking about? Just ballpark? Like, what is the annual operational cost of a building like this? You know, if we can't lease half the space or, you know, I don't know, thinking kind of, you know, in the more negative scenarios, just what, what are our liabilities?
Well, so the, and I'll look up the exact number, but, but we, we have done some pretty tight projections, conservative, but, but detailed projections on, you know, what happens if you have a certain amount of, of vacancy? What are the operating costs of the building? What is the personnel associated with, with the building? You know, what are the, what are the potential revenues, of course? And then what does that gap look like, right? So we, we've done a fair, and then the, the whole programming component is really kind of separate from the cost of the building management itself. So you, you have the possibility of, you know, you have the building itself running its own economics, and then on top of it, you have the, the, the cost of programming, this commercialization effort that, that Jen was talking about. We projected out and it looked like about on average, it was about $150,000 a year of gap spending that our model built, you know, bakes in for the first three years. So on average, it might be up and down your and that amount, you know, again, does not include any, any revenue that the EDA wouldn't accept as part of the model. So it doesn't include event revenue, doesn't include, you know, sponsorships and that sort of thing, because those have not been committed to date. So, you know, so if, if things go terribly wrong, it could be higher than that. And so, you know, I mean, it sort of depends on how wrong you want me to project. It could, you know, it could be, you know, probably upwards of twice that amount if things go terribly wrong. And then if things go, you know, hopefully reasonably well, that amount may not even be necessary. It sort of depends on, on, on the success of some of these other efforts. The mill itself generates not an insignificant amount of, of its total income from event rentals. And, and in fact, if you do a study of, of spaces around the state that we, that we did at the time we were building out the economics for the mill, you, you see that that's a, a normal, you know, that event revenues and sponsorships are a normal significant part of, of the overall package of income. So we're hoping that that'll be the case in this building and to mitigate the risk that, that, you know, that you bring up.
Okay. Thank you. I'll let somebody else go for now. Thanks.
One of the other things, if it also helps, is that EDA is pretty cautious. The reason that they ask for budget projections is they want to make sure that they are funding something that will be sustainable and not going into a black hole. And so we have to be able to show financial capability and sort of different line items. So to Alex's point, where we did have conservative estimates around rent and other things like that. So that's part of the application.
Thank you. Other questions? Council member Sandberg.
If I could ask you, Madam Chair, what are we needing to do this evening? At least this committee? I think I heard some conversation earlier that it might be possible to just have a letter go out of support that basically would be penned by you on behalf of this committee. Is that the fastest, most expedient way to handle this? Or are there other scenarios we need to consider?
Council member Volan?
I would suggest that a majority vote of the committee would be sufficient for the committee to sign a letter and those who vote in favor of it would attach their names to the letter. But yeah, it doesn't require that it go to the full council.
Right. We're not talking about a full-blown resolution or anything like that. I think this is just an express note of support for pursuing this. And again, the commitment of funds is coming from the RDC, which we don't have any authority over that. That's correct, Mr. Crowley?
Yeah, the fund is coming from the, I think if, if the RDC crosses a threshold, and I believe that threshold may be $5 million, I think that becomes elevated to the council, but this is well below that threshold.
But it's with, it's entirely within our authority as a committee to sign a letter like this, does not require a resolution of the full council.
Right. And, and I feel fully prepared to do that this evening, if that will be helpful in getting this moved forward. I understand it's competitive, but I would imagine like many grants, the sooner you can get it in, the better, right?
That's right.
Council member Volan?
I have more questions. Okay. Well, if you wanted to ask a question, we're still in first round questions.
I know. Go ahead.
Okay. Don't we already have the equivalent of a SEDs in the form of a Trades District Master Plan? Did we really need to write a new sort of document that proves we have a plan? Didn't we already have a plan for the Trades District?
Yeah. So, well, first of all, we did leverage the, the CTP Master Plan and, and the Batel Study and a variety of other plans. I think the way that I would answer that is whereas the CTP Master Plan looked around and said what was needed, and this is what the CTP could do, the SEDs is less focused as a document on one particular solution. It does reference this, this as a component of a, of a number of different strategies, this project that we're in, this concept that we're developing. But it's really a regional, you know, strategy. So it's not, you know, it's not very geographically limited like some of the, some of the other plans might have been. It really looks out on the broad, on the broad need around the region and, and highlights what kind of strategies, you know, should be considered to help to address some of the challenges that are out there. So, so it's sort of like, you can almost think of the CTP Master Plan as sitting inside of the SEDs, right, as a, as one strategy.
That's fine. What is the deadline for this proposal?
There is none. The deadline is when the money runs out. Our self-imposed internal deadline is Wednesday.
Okay. Well, then that leads me to a harder question that plays on a word that Ms. Pearl said earlier, the question of diversification. My first question on this topic is, how is tech, as in high-tech, really a diversification of our economy? Certainly, we don't mind the tech sector, but are we really diversifying our economy just by doing more of the thing we've been pursuing for years?
Yeah. So that's actually addressed in the feasibility study. There, there's what we've been pursuing and fostering, but then there's the actual proportion of the economy that comes from that. And so if you look, for example, at manufacturing employment in our area, let me just pull up some numbers for reference here. Or life sciences, for example. So are, we have about 68,000 people who are employed in Monroe County. These were 2019 statistics. And working in manufacturing employment, for example, you have around 7,200. Accommodation and food service, sort of hospitality, 7,800. Healthcare and social assistance, 9,000. If we look at who is within tech, that's a relatively smaller piece of the puzzle, but it's been identified as having a great deal of potential when it comes to things like wage growth and also applicability to other industries in order to help other industries grow as well, as well as having an attractive force. So one of the things that we found in a number of earlier studies, such as the Quality of Place and Workforce Attraction Plan that the BDC and Community Foundation did two years ago, was that individuals might come here for a job at the university or, you know, another institution, but sometimes they have trailing partners, or sometimes they lack opportunities, you know, after that first job. And similarly, for people who have lived here for years, they may, you know, lack opportunities to move around and diversify their experience. So we have a growing number of tech companies. There's probably around 40 to 50 in our market right now. And the studies have shown that there's a great deal of opportunity that can still be seized there. But the feasibility study found that these were sort of components that need to be put into place, essentially a hub that would help encourage it and bring resources together. And that's something that we had also anecdotally heard from, for years from tech companies as well as, you know, they're often working in silos in this market. I think when the mill was launched, you have a great example of how all of a sudden it created a center of gravity for startups. This is a similar idea where it creates a center of gravity for those who are working in tech and building on the efforts that have happened earlier in this market.
In other words, for companies that have matured past the startup phase?
Correct.
My final question on this topic is, what effort is there in this application to diversify those who have represented women, black, indigenous, people of color? You know, is, what, what does, what do the application materials say about them?
So the current list of partners that we have include those like the mill, which has Code School, which I know has been focusing on, you know, training for individuals across all types of backgrounds. The ROI, the Regional Opportunity Initiatives, they have been working on pipeline development for individuals in STEM. We also work regularly with other partners like Ivy Tech, and those are very strategically placed partners that help individuals who may have been displaced, for example, in, you know, recent dislocations from the pandemic, et cetera. And so the, in terms of the partners that we have at the table and the, the programs that they are bringing, in addition to the training programs that the City of Bloomington has committed to as well, those are included under the umbrella of the concept.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Council member Flaherty, unmute, please.
Thank you. So has the RDC already looked at this or committed funds if the grant is awarded, or will that come to them at some future date? Or does that, yeah, I'll leave it there.
That happened two hours ago.
Okay. And they said yes?
They said yes. Yeah. That we had, okay, been talking with them for several, for, you know, at least a, a month about it. And so it wasn't a surprise, but yes.
Can I ask what the vote was?
Unanimous.
Okay. And let's see. So this, this property is owned by the city right now, is that right?
The, the land itself, yeah, the Redevelopment Commission.
Redevelopment Commission, right. And would they continue to own both the property and the building? If, if this grant is awarded and the project has, goes forward?
Yeah. If, if, if built, the, the land and the building would, would remain with the Redevelopment Commission and, but would be managed by a nonprofit entity.
Right. Okay. And so our green building ordinance would apply to the building then as well, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I have another question, but I can stop if there's others.
No, go ahead, actually.
Okay. Yeah, just thinking a little bit more about the, the case, and I'm sure this is, you know, spelled out in, in greater detail in, in the supporting materials. But trying to think of, of where exactly these sort of beyond startup phase, medium size, or whatever size tech firms are, are coming from is, I'm kind of thinking of three potentials, and, and maybe it's a combination of these, or maybe I'm missing something. So the three categories I kind of identified were, I mean, and some of these were mentioned, like, almost like a graduation space for companies that may start at the mill and kind of graduate or, or move on from that. A second might be existing tech companies that are in our city or region now relocating their space to be in kind of a, a hub and, and try to, you know, capitalize on some of those synergies that you all have talked about. And the third would be, you know, the potential for existing firms to move here from outside our region, whether it's a, you know, a branch or, or the, you know, headquarters of the, of the company itself. A, am I missing any possible, you know, categories in, in that kind of quick analysis? And, and B, do you have a rough idea of like, what kind of breakdown we're expecting to see? I guess there's a little bit of a, it feels like there's a little bit of a, if you build it, they will come, kind of, kind of argument here. Is that right? That, that by creating the infrastructure in the space that, that hopefully there will emerge sort of some new, new companies as well. So yeah, if you could speak to that theme a bit.
Sure. So I, I think I, I would add, and maybe Jen's got others, but I would add, you know, there's, there's a kind of IP commercialization off the campus. So it's not an existing built, uh, company, nor is it in the mill right now. It's sort of an SBIR kind of, you know, phase two type companies that, so, so that, that I think is a, is a really interesting thing. That's, that's actually happened organically in town, but, but not as, I think aggressively as, as other universities has, have pursued that. So I would probably add that as a, as a fourth option. Jen, I don't know if there's anybody else that-
Yeah, I agree with you. And one that I would add is actually spinoffs from existing tech companies that are currently mature. And so as part of the feasibility study, we did interviews with local tech firms. And one of them actually noted how, you know, something like this could be valuable to their current employees who they are trying to encourage in innovating and coming up with, you know, spinoffs, et cetera. And so you can also help the existing mature firms grow by innovating new products as well.
So to the question of, of if you build it, they will come, which by the way, is a good movie, is, you know, the, the, the role of the feasibility study is to, is to put some teeth into that, right? And it's, it's again, what, what Jen was saying before, the, the EDA is not really interested in dumping money into pipe dreams. So they're, they're pretty rigorous. And I think primarily the role of the feasibility study is to say, is to do some deep research to say, you know, will they come, right, essentially? And, and, and so the, the feasibility study has done that, has, has discovered this need. And so, you know, nothing is guaranteed, but, but it certainly makes it much more reasonable to project that a, that a facility like this would be successful based on, you know, the, the extensive both literature research, but also interviews that were done as part of the feasibility study progress or process.
Sure.
We also did a real estate analysis. So we worked with a local property appraisal firm that dug into office spaces right now, what demand looks like now and what they're anticipating two years from now when this would be built. So there was, there was data analysis on the clusters itself, you know, looking at the companies that are here. There was the interviews and then there was the real estate analysis.
Great. And just final question, if there's any related to that, if, if there's any rough, rough sense of, of, yeah, kind of percentage breakdowns among the different categories we talked about. Do we feel like existing firms in our market now will make up a significant port, a portion of, 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 you know, occupants of the building? Or is it you know, half expected to be new from outside, you know, emergent companies or from outside our market moving in? Like, is there any sense there? Like, and again, maybe the feasibility study gets into this, but I, I haven't looked at that yet.
Generally speaking, when we're looking at business retention, expansion and attraction, you tend to get more job growth locally, and this is, this is across all industries, more job growth when you're helping grow your existing companies here. And so for companies that may need to use the space, and you sort of hit on this with the mill graduates, is those that are growing out of their space and could benefit from co-locating with other companies, that would be a higher proportion we would anticipate. The other thing that we would say too is you would have tech companies who are not tenants, who would also benefit from the building. So there will be shared meeting room spaces that could be used for trainings, meetings. You know, we had a couple of tech companies in the interview say, we're good with working remote, but we still need space for board meetings and trainings. And so that's actually built into the amenities for this, as well as the revenue streams that we would anticipate from the building. And so you would have tenants and non-tenant tech companies that would be able to cross-pollinate in this space and in close proximity to the mill as well.
Thank you.
Other question? Council member Volan?
Yes. When was the material for this meeting made available to you, Madam Chair?
Just today, just earlier today.
Okay.
This is a quick, you're right. I mean, yeah, from my perspective, I think we need to keep in mind what we're being asked. If you are being asked for the 1.9 million dollars in matching fund, I'd like a little more time, but that's not what we're being asked for this evening, so.
We're still being asked to effectively vote.
True.
I mean, by adding our, our names to a letter, we're effectively endorsing and voting. And I've had three hours. These materials have been available to me for three hours.
Okay.
I mean, is there going to be a follow-up meeting of the committee? Or are we effective to endorse the project tonight?
I would actually, before answering that question, I would actually ask Mr. Crowley, what exactly are the elements of a letter of support from your perspective? And what kinds of things would that need to include? Because I think that will speak to Councilmember Volin's question about whether or not we could vote.
So we've had letters of support that run the gamut, but, but, you know, basically what this, what it says is that the city and BEDC are both capable of doing this, that the community would benefit from the project as proposed. And that's, you know, and that's sort of it, right? That, that's what, that's what generally the letters of support have included. So it's really a way to validate that, you know, it's not a bunch of yahoos doing this from the, from the, you know, grant management perspective, and that broadly speaking, a project like this would benefit the community.
I have no doubt that this project would benefit the community, but I generally speaking, only vote on things that are in writing. Signature is a form of a vote. I will sort of prematurely kick off comments on this by saying, I am sure this is something that I am likely to support, but I'm not going to do it tonight. If there's a second follow-up meeting perhaps within a week, where there's time to read the materials where there's a letter that I can see and read before I agree to sign it, then I'm inclined to do so. But I'm not going to do it on three hours' notice. Having said that, I, I find the presentation to be mostly compelling. I am probably, I see myself supporting it, but not under these circumstances, not tonight. So if there is any kind of a vote tonight, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
I cannot pretend that I've read the materials, chapter and verse, but I have skimmed them prior to this meeting. And the presentation on its own merit has been convincing to me that this is a little enough thing that we can do with respect to just endorsing. The money is there. RDC has apparently unanimously voted in favor of supporting it. So it's not like we're speculating on, do we have the funding to be able to do this? So I would be more than happy to vote this evening to allow our chair to draft a letter if we need to see that before we actually sign off on it. I, I don't know if that's a suitable way forward here. Because again, I don't think we're in a position here to micromanage the project or vote on its details. We're just basically saying to this grant source, we're good for the money. The tech, tech industry is going to be absolutely crucial going forward because many of the industries that are emerging now are going to be virtual in nature and are going to be dependent on, on more technology and more resources. So in terms of the whole diversity of the project, that's going to be an absolutely foundational piece. So I really, at this point, see no grounds for opposing it or not being willing to sign off on a mere letter of endorsement, which, you know, many grants need. And we are a committee. We don't speak for the entire council. Obviously, we're a non-binding operation here to begin with. But we're the Sustainable Development Committee, and as such, this is in our wheelhouse. So I am absolutely comfortable, given the professionalism of Alex Crowley and all the work that he's put in, the professionalism of Jen Pearl and the BEDC. I think it's little enough that we can sign off on this tonight. That's how I would be voting. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty, did I see him? Please.
Sure. I, I feel, I see, I see both my colleagues' arguments and points, and I think they're smaritan in them. I probably lean a little bit on the side of what, what Councilmember Volin said, simply for the fact of, yeah, wanting to, I mean, I don't feel like I need to wait a week because I understand you don't have a week and that you're wanting to submit this tomorrow or the next day, perhaps the latest. But I think without seeing a letter of support in what it says, and just having just a few more hours to, to review, review things in the materials, I would feel uncomfortable voting in favor of a letter tonight and would abstain as well. I, I, I feel similarly. I feel like you, the, the project and proposal are well, well, have been, are well-conceived and have, have a high level of professionalism, and I think I would support it. I just want a little more time to review. And I guess I'm thinking of long-term liabilities too, which is why I asked about them. And I don't think that they're overwhelming. I liked the answers I got from Mr. Crowley. But even so, if, if we're kind of creating, I understand this isn't the council's decision, of course. It's, it's other people beyond, beyond this Zoom call are going to make decisions about whether we get awarded the funding or not. But it is a commitment, sort of a binding mechanism to a future path. And I think, and it will have implications on budget things in the future potentially that the council will be considering. So I just think, as a matter of diligence, I do want to take a little more time to review things. And by that, I mean like 24 hours. So I would be happy to look at a draft letter and decide on it by tomorrow evening. For instance, if that's not problematic for, for the application. So I guess I'd be curious to hear if that is a problem from Mr. Crowley or Ms. Pearl. But that's kind of how I feel at this time.
Yeah, let me just, let me say a couple of things. So, so first of all, you know, totally understand, you, you have no idea how crazy this grant process has been in terms of getting documents ready. A lot of documents in a very compressed period of time. And so we withheld sending you documents even as late as Friday because those documents were being actively worked on over the weekend. So, you know, we were, we're, we're in a constant state of flux, totally understand that it was a lot to throw at you. And, you know, that, you know, point taken on that. From the perspective of timing, you know, I think realistically, we probably release this thing on Wednesday. So if, you know, if it's possible to have a letter by end of day tomorrow, or even first thing Wednesday morning, I think we can probably find a way to slot it in. And, and look, if, if this is not something that, that makes you comfortable, I think we, you know, as I mentioned before, we, there, there, we would love to have your support. And, you know, would, would, would love to slot that in if it's available. But if it's not, then I think we, we just have to keep, proceed without it.
Great. Mr. Crowley, Mr. Lucas, I'm going to ask you to chime in here for a second. Welcome back. Question, if we, just from a procedural standpoint, I think there may be council members who feel more comfortable, obviously, with a lot more time to review this project and what's gone into it, and, and would not feel comfortable signing off on a letter prior to Wednesday or prior to next week even, and that's fine. We also have council members, if I'm understanding Councilmember Flaherty correctly, who needs a day to double-check it and spend some time with the material, but may be prepared to make a decision tomorrow. And we have some council members on this call who would be willing to sign off tonight. What is our, from your perspective, what's our best way forward? Is it, is it authorizing the chair to collaborate with Mr. Crowley on a letter and then sharing that with council members who may be interested in being part of it? Or?
Councilmember Volin may have some thoughts, and I know the council in the past has, has approved letters of support or advocacy letters by motion. I would be hesitant to suggest that the committee could sign off, that a letter could come from the committee without a vote of the committee.
All right, I understand that. But could individual council members, in their role as individual council members, add their signature?
Yes, although I'd caution kind of the appearance of, of action of, of the body of either this committee or, or the council as a whole.
Sure. Councilmember Volin.
I would suggest the materials were sent to us at 3:54 PM. And the standard by which we do business is two business days' notice. We try to get, well, we send our packets out on a Friday for the next Wednesday's meeting. Forty-eight hours is the requirement for open door. If we were to reconvene Wednesday at four, I would feel comfortable voting, but no earlier than that time. If that would make a difference to everybody, we could do that way. But otherwise, you know, we've received budget materials that, like back in 2014, we received them the night before budget hearings. And so council took action to defer it because normally we have, we have at least a weekend to look at them. But we really should have 48 hours for any kind of action of a committee or the council. It's not asking a lot. But I think that's the appropriate thing here.
Let me ask a question then. Let's go to Councilmember Sandberg after that. Mr. Crowley, would a letter of support Wednesday evening, which is essentially what it would be to, still be meaningful, or does the, do you plan on submitting the packet prior to that?
It, it would certainly be better to have it earlier. You know, what would actually be happening at that point is we would be holding up the release of the grant, which, given the competitive nature of the grant, you know, there's, just, we, in fact, have moved our release date forward on the concern that as time goes on, that works against us. So we would, you know, we would prefer to be able to do it sooner than that, if possible.
Mr. Lucas, and then Councilmember Sandberg.
Responding to Councilmember Volin's suggestion that the committee meet on Wednesday at four. As you just noted, we have to have 48 hours' notice for that committee meeting. So at this point, the earliest any, any action could take place. If it doesn't happen tonight, the council meeting at 6:30 would be the next opportunity.
Point of order, not if we continue this meeting instead of adjourning it. If it's a continuation of a previous meeting, then it does not have, it doesn't have the same standard. So I think that's a reasonable offer. But the idea that somehow, because this is, as Mr. Crowley said, a self-imposed deadline, the idea that somehow we can't even wait till four o'clock on Wednesday, very much bothers me. Forty-eight hours is not too much to ask for council's endorsement. I shouldn't have to beg for this kind of time.
Councilmember Sandberg.
I was just thinking that if we could continue this meeting and still be within our, our ability to notice, could we meet sometime tomorrow after the two council members have had an opportunity to review their, their information?
I've stated the terms under which I'm willing to, to put my signature on a letter. So nothing before Wednesday, 4:00 PM. I have a lot to do myself, so.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, it's, I understand Councilmember Volin's concern, and, and I also understand the need for, for swift action here. I'm willing to, to vote on this tomorrow if we wanted to reconvene for a brief time. I, I understand it's just not perfect circumstances, but it also is a relatively minor action. I, I, I will do my best to read all the materials I've received and make sure I'm comfortable with everything. But, but it's also not, as, as a number of people have pointed out, we are, we are not the ones committing the funds for the match. There are larger long-term implications for a variety of things, but I don't, I, I can try, I mean, I can, I can be ready to vote on something by tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, if, if we wanted to consider it then. Especially if we had a draft letter in hand from, that Chair Scimboli worked out with Mr. Crowley.
This, this is Kaisa. I'm doing the project management for this. I put it in the chat, but just, and first I just want to say thank you to all of you for your consideration. And we are fully cognizant of the breakneck speed of this. So I, I do understand some of those concerns. But from just a project management perspective, in order for this to be feasible in terms of getting it into the packet for the application, we, we really wouldn't need it by the end of the day tomorrow. And we do have some sample letters from other organizations that I'd be happy to provide. We have a template as well as several examples that I'd be happy to provide to Chairwoman Scimboli, if that's helpful.
I'm sorry, point of order, Madam Chair, is the thing due Wednesday, or is it not due Wednesday? I'm getting conflicting messaging here for the administration.
Let me paraphrase, Mr. Crowley, if I understood you correctly, it is not, it would be accepted by the entity. It would be accepted by the EDA after Wednesday as part of a Volin deadline. But it's your assessment that our ability to be competitive for this would require us to submit sooner rather than later. And that's where the Wednesday came from. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. And what Kaisa was bringing up is, is really the mechanics of packaging things together. So you, you can't just, you know, you just can't throw something in. You, you need to, you need to construct your grant submission package. So what she was anticipating was some advance to the time we actually release it, to be able to make sure that we have everything in order and going out the door. So that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that the sooner we can, we can do it, the better from our perspective. We are hoping to get this grant out the door on Wednesday, and, and, you know, that, that's been our deadline. And again, we moved that up to try to make sure that we get in there as quickly as possible.
Councilmember Flaherty.
My other thought was if we voted on a letter of support in principle tonight and sort of satisfied that voting requirement, I guess, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud. I feel like I would want to reserve my right not to sign if I, if I, again, if I reviewed a little more thoroughly and felt uncomfortable about something. Maybe that sort of moves the whole point of a vote tonight. But just, just thinking out loud about how we can get this done.
Let me suggest then that based on what I'm hearing, there are varying degrees of comfort with signing off on something tonight or voting in support of this project. May I suggest that we continue this meeting until tomorrow afternoon, we'll find a time. In the interim, Mr. Crowley and I can work together on a draft letter. Is that possible, Mr. Crowley?
Yeah.
Okay. And get that to you as soon as we possibly can. Do you think we could do that by noon tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. And then we could have time to more fully discuss that tomorrow afternoon when we reconvene. And then with the understanding, Councilmember Volin, I hear what you're saying, you would not be prepared to vote in that period of time. I understand that.
This discussion has changed my vote to a no. I, I am not going to be taken for granted. I don't appreciate that there was a possibility of 48 hours' notice for these materials to be given. It's not a lot to ask, 48 hours' notice. It could have been submitted on Friday, and we would have been, you know, I mean, even that's not enough time. It's not two business days. But I would probably have shrugged it off. But I am accustomed to this from economic development, that it's always a rush. It's always, we always have to do it now. And I'm asking for two business days. I'm asking for the standard amount of time to consider fully the materials that you've given us in order to put my name on something, to vote on something, because we are talking about this as a vote. It is within the purview of the committee to have a vote. We don't have to have a resolution of the full council. But the majority can do it at once, and I see that there is a likely majority for it. If this committee waits till Wednesday at four o'clock, I am likely to vote yes. Before that, I will vote no. I, I, I do not want to see this happen again. Forty-eight hours is not a lot of time to ask for the materials that I am being asked to vote on, let alone, again, what Mr. Sherman taught us many, many years on council was, it should be reduced to writing. I should know what I'm voting on. I have a sense of it. But you're asking me to vote on a letter, let me see the text. I'm not asking a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. What is the bill of the committee? I'm, I'm hearing a willingness to convene tomorrow afternoon. Councilmember Sandberg.
Would, are we in a position to make a motion to vote this evening? Or are we more inclined to wait until, say, what, two o'clock tomorrow afternoon? Do we have a time?
I'd be very.
Somebody should make a motion.
So, Councilmember Flaherty.
I, I guess I'm uncomfortable voting right now. I, I, in particular, the second point that Councilmember Volin just made. I, I would want to see something in writing to know exactly what I'm voting on. The benefit of that is also that it will afford me an extra number of hours at some point in the next 24 hours to more thoroughly review materials and therefore be more comfortable. I don't take Councilmember Volin's points, you know, lightly, but I, I think if we all take it to heart, you know, I appreciate the administration's efforts, and this is a, this is a rapidly, you know, not evolving, but, but a very short timeline that they're working with. So trying to be accommodating, I would be willing and happy to, to vote on a letter of support that we see in writing by tomorrow afternoon sometime. that we see in writing by tomorrow afternoon sometime.
With that in mind, may I suggest that we continue this meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2:30, 3? What is everyone's availability?
I have meetings all afternoon.
Those times are fine with me.
I could meet anytime after three, four, 4:30 would be that would be better. Or five, you know.
Yeah, I, five o'clock and I start bumping into things. May I suggest tomorrow, we continue this meeting tomorrow at four? And then in the interim, that should give people even even a few more hours to spend some time with the letter, the project.
I move this meeting be continued tomorrow at four.
Second.
Sorry.
I move this meeting be continued to tomorrow at four.
And Councilmember Sandberg, was that a second?
Yes.
And we need a roll call vote for this, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, and after the vote's taken, I'll want to announce the location. Obviously, this will take place on Zoom, but the open door law for for the committee to be able to do this, I will need to announce the date, time and place of the reconvened meeting and have that announcement reflected in the the memorandum that the clerk's office will prepare. So I'm going to go ahead and schedule a Zoom link and announce that that'll be posted on the council website for folks who are looking for the location if if this motion succeeds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm.
Additional discussion?
Sorry. I'm running into some issues with the technology. We actually have a regularly scheduled meeting at 4:00 PM tomorrow. I won't be able to schedule another meeting on the same Zoom account, so.
May I, may I propose we, our department has a Zoom account. We can share those credentials with you if you'd like to use that as a, is that something you can do?
I believe the clerk's office also has an account. Sophia, are you able to?
Yes. I, I just mentioned that we are able to host the meeting and I can make myself available at 4:00 PM tomorrow.
Can, can you make that meeting now so that we can announce?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't the announcement, this is a continuation of a meeting?
We would announce the location of the meeting. So it's it's a little unusual in that we're not saying that the meeting will be continued until tomorrow at four at the council chambers. We need to tell folks where it's going to be located. How you want to determine location, I don't know if it's enough to say it's on Zoom and we'll post the link on their website. I think a better approach might be to say, here's the link where you can find tomorrow's meeting. So I'd like to at least do that while we've got this meeting going on.
And Ms. McDowell, am I, are you working on that currently, getting that set up?
Yes.
Okay. So Ms. McDowell, we're kind of getting a Zoom link prior to the end of this meeting. For a reconvened meeting tomorrow at four, we have a motion and a second to that effect. Is there any further discussion?
Point of order, Madam Chair. You don't need to have the clerk call the role. You can call it as a committee chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, only a related comment that about the situation that, just to Mr. Crowley and Ms. Pearl, you know, I don't, we may not find ourselves in this exact situation in the future. But I think all of us would understand receiving materials that were still being developed in some respects. So having received a 95% draft on Friday, I think would have been, we would have probably been in a position to all be feel comfortable voting tonight. So just for future reference, I think erring on the side of, you know, adequate time to prepare with with a mostly complete draft is probably better from our perspective. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan.
I want to second what Councilmember Flaherty said. It's not that, I mean, you're letting the perfectly enemy of the good. Send us what you have, but do it with sufficient notice. If you, I mean, you don't, it doesn't need to be perfect, but we need to know what it is we're being asked to do. Again, I had three hours notice, like, you know, that's, there's a reason we have a 48 hour, you know, public notice law. So whatever you have ready should ship. And I wouldn't have this problem if I had been able to review the documents in advance, to review the the bulk of it. So he's right, 95% is better than 100. Send us what you have, like, some of these materials are clearly made before today. They weren't being, they weren't finished today. Next time, please give us 48 hours, two business days notice, and this problem won't happen again. I'm going to vote no tonight because I can't attend this meeting. And I've said what time I would attend. If the meeting were to be continued to Wednesday at four, I am very likely to be a yes. Thank you.
For the comments, thank you. With that, let's move to a vote. And I'm just going to write on my screen, Councilmember, this is a motion to continue this meeting until 4:00 PM tomorrow, at which time we will look at a draft of the letter together. So, and that Ms. McDowell will be arranging a Zoom link for us to be placed in chat before we part company tonight if this motion passes. Is that correct? Mr. Lucas?
She's, Ms. McDowell's actually already sent me the link. I will display that so that folks at home, if they're watching on cats, they can also see the location. I'll send it over the Zoom chat as well.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, let's move to a vote, Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Volan.
No.
And Councilmember Scamblerie, I will add my yes vote to that. We will continue this meeting until 4:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, the 22nd. Mr. Lucas, you have the Zoom link posted. Is there anything else we need to accomplish tonight? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Volan.
The issue is that, I mean, if we can keep the meeting going for a few seconds so that people can copy it, I mean, I'm not sure how somebody would access, I guess, by the screen.
I'll announce for the public too, that this meeting link is is now posted on the city council's website. You can access the meeting simply by clicking this link. We have an additional moment, we will also add it to the calendar, so it'll appear on the meeting sidebar on the main city council page.
Can you make sure that the word continued appears in the meeting title?
Absolutely. Yes.
Very good. Or maybe continued from the date of September 21st. Thank you.
May I make a quick comment?
Please.
So between now and tomorrow's meeting, if if you're still reviewing the information, know that I'm available. I'm going to offer Jen Pearl up as being available as well. That includes you, Councilmember Volan. I mean, this building is actually in your in your district. So we would be particularly interested in, in, you know, having, having you at least understand what's going on, even if you can't make the meeting. But but, you know, let us know if you have any questions about the project so we can answer them as quickly as possible.
And I'll second what Alex said. I believe all the council members have my cell phone number. And that's always the best place to reach me if you have any questions. To echo something that Alex said earlier, we originally had wanted to get this in at the end of September. The reason why we ended up moving up the application date was we heard from EDA that they were getting a wave of applications coming in. And they said, as soon as you can get it in, the better. Just because when the funds are gone, they're gone. And so understand it's very short notice. And you can call me late tonight too, because we're going to be working on this tonight and tomorrow morning, et cetera. But we appreciate your consideration and we understand that it's a very busy time for everyone.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
One question, Ms. Pearl, when did that phone call happen?
The phone call when we were speaking with EDA. I think it was probably, I have to go back and check my records on that. I'm sorry, because I was out a few days last week.
Was it last week? Was it two weeks ago? How long ago, roughly?
It was about three weeks ago.
Okay, so you knew three weeks ago? And I mean, I'm sorry, that doesn't wash. You know, like, if you knew three weeks ago, you could still have sent us some material a couple of days ago. I, I, I understand that you, your self imposed goal was the 25th or the 23rd, rather. But I mean, that just unfortunately, that makes me even more disappointed that you knew that.
We did not have the documents from the partners, some of them, until today. We had, we had several different partners who were conducting various aspects of the study, from feasibility to environmental to architecture engineering to real estate feasibility.
So I got four attachments today, the concept, the agenda, fiscal year 20P to the EAA, and then the TD Tech Center. Which of these documents was not ready?
Well, actually, they're all still being, so I mean, look, I think your point is well taken, which is, you know, sometimes we have to, sometimes we want to try to get things as tight as possible before we effectively go public with them. And, you know, and there are various stages of completion. And these things have been, I mean, literally, we're all burning the midnight oil here. So we tried to get as complete a set of documents as possible to get in front of you to respect, you know, the fact that, you know, we didn't want to put a bunch of, you know, slap together drafts. Literally, documents were being worked on over the weekend. I was up at four this morning. We've been working significant hours on this. So while I understand your concern, it's, we were not sitting around twiddling our thumbs into the last minute and then firing them off. I know that's not your implication, but you should know a significant amount of efforts going into this. I have to say, you know, we, we, we were not sitting on these documents just for the sake.
I have not in any way implied or meant to imply that someone is twiddling their thumbs. We're delaying to the last minute. I'm very glad to hear you say, to recognize that, you know, you could have released something that was less polished. Please err on the side of less polished from now on. We get this with the budget materials, we get this with legislation. We have, you know, amendments the day of, it's okay. It really is okay. And what's not okay is being asked to look at something that's perfectly polished in three hours. Like, you didn't even know what was coming or what you would need to read. It's just impossible. Like, I literally didn't have, didn't imagine that I'd have to read this or I'd have time to do it. So let me make crystal clear that what you just said, please take it to heart. Like, you know, send us what you have with enough time to look at it. Don't let the perfectly enemy of the good anymore. I appreciate it. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Councilmember Sandberg.
I want to thank Ms. Pearl and Mr. Crowley and Ms. Goodman. I completely understand the position that you're in. I'm growing a little bit uncomfortable with this wrist slapping of you at this point in time. Ms. Madam Chair, can we adjourn this meeting? We have our next steps already organized and ready to go, and I would like to get on with my evening. Thank you.
I finished my comment. Point of order, Madam Chair. I don't appreciate the comments from my colleague.
I will offer the comment that, that dynamics of this committee aside, please know how much I appreciate Mr. Crowley and Ms. Pearl, your work on this and the work of the team. You know that I'm a fundraiser by trade and it is one thing to quibble over existing pots of money. I so appreciate and admire entrepreneurial efforts to bring in new resources. And so thank you, sincerely thank you for your good work in putting this together. And barring any objections, shall we adjourn?
No, no, we're not adjourning. We're continuing.
Continuing, correct. So with that, let us continue this meeting until tomorrow afternoon. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.